Education meeting for Monday, June 9th if everyone would stand to recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let the record show we have all board members present except for Tracy Rankin and Jamie Lewis Gonzalez. We are needing an adoption of the agenda, including the supplemental personnel report.
I'll make that motion.
A second. Motion by Jeff and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be five zero. And then Tracy, let me know that she was able to review the bills and everything looked good, so I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Motion by Lisa, second by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero. We have no special presentations tonight. That'll probably pick back up in August. Recognition of visitors. Persons may present ideas or concerns regarding USD 443 schools. No action will be taken by the board at this meeting. Personalities and behavior of employees are not to be presented during this period, but are to be reported to the employee's immediate supervisor. The president shall determine the amount of time to be spent for citizen participation. If you'd like to address the board, please approach the podium at this time. Seeing nobody jump up, we'll move on to the consent agenda, consent agenda, which includes the approval of personnel, including the supplemental personnel report, approval of minutes for the May 12th Board of Education meeting, and the minutes from the May 12th work session Board of Education meeting, approval of cardiac emergency response plan and protocols, approval of renewal for frontline professional learning management and substitute management system, approval of 2025-2026 fundraising requests for Comanche Dodge City Middle School and Dodge City High School, approval of 2025-2026 Dodge City High School overnight trip requests, approval of internal staff presenters for the 2025 Summer Institute Professional Development, approval of donation to Ross Elementary from Stutzman's, approval of donation to Sunnyside from Pepsi, approval of donation to Comanche Middle School from Ford County Historical Society, approval of 2025-26 district meal prices, approval of donation to Alternative Ed from Ford County Historical Society, approval of donation to Dodge City High School for the Demon Closet, approval of independent consultant contract fiscal services for Bright Beginnings Early Childhood, approval of various donations to Dodge City High School with the attached list of donors, approval of renewal for the three-year music instrument purchase plan, approval of TAZEN co-teaching project, approval of SCUTA renewal, approval of frontline recruiting and hiring human capital, frontline human capital management renewal, approval of district facility use policy guidelines and fee schedule, approval of Kansas Early Head Start Child Care Partnership Grant, approval of Kansas Early Head Start Home Visitation Grant, and approval of school supply kits for migrant students. Any questions on any of those items?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay.
I'll second it.
We've got a motion by Tammy and a second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. We've got Amy running to the podium so she can just go at it.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Dirksen, President Killian, and Board of Education. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to give you a KISA update on our accreditation process and the work that we've done this school year in preparing our district plan for submission and also to for implementation in the upcoming 25-26 school year. So this evening, I will be reviewing the current KISA 2.0 accreditation determination areas and the timelines, as well as sharing a little bit of information about that school improvement model. We've looked at that a couple times, but I'll bring that back to your memory. And then sharing where our district plan focus was determined to be, as indicated by the school building leadership teams and the district leadership team. And then I'll share with you the district academic and culture goals and share with you the current information that we have, as well as where we're planning to go for the upcoming year, and then give you an idea of what that timeline for next school year will look like in the KISA collaboration cycle. So just as a reminder, KISA has been making a little bit of a shift. This actually started when Ms. Nedler was still here, and the district was involved in a pilot to look at updating the accreditation process through the state and making it much more clear, more precise, and focused. So in the past, that was a five-year process. It is now going to be a yearly process. With the implementation over the next three years, they're going to kind of walk that in slowly so that schools have time to prepare. But we will still be looking at these three areas here on the screen as the accreditation area. So school improvement, which includes our district leadership plan, our action plan, and those action plans are aligned to the school's building plans. So we refer to those a lot as Kansas Star Plans. So if you hear principals talk about that, those two things are synonymous. So our goal, as we created the district plan and schools were updating their building plans, were to really align those pieces so that we're working in step with each other for school improvement. The second area is student outcomes, and this is one area that they will not be evaluating districts on until the 26-27 school year. We will still be reporting on student outcomes, and they haven't quite released what those outcome expectations will be yet. We're hoping to get that in September. But as always, our goal is to increase student achievement. So regardless of where they set the threshold, we are going to continue our march on with improving student outcomes. And...
Amy, I'm sorry. Is the student outcomes, are they measuring that based on standardized testing, or is it some other?
They have, they have not released that yet. However, just some preliminary pieces that we're getting is that it would be the state assessment results, however, based on some growth. So we have some new reporting pieces that we're able to look at. They're called transition tables, so that we can look at students who are moving. They may not be meeting that proficiency, but they are moving in their growth towards achieving that. So that's, that's a really positive piece for us. And the principals and I and Dr. Springsteen and Mr. Turner have been looking at those transition tables to see students who maybe were on the high end of a Level 1 and have now moved to a low Level 2, that's showing some growth. So it's, that, that piece, I think, is, is a step in a positive direction. As soon as we get those set student measures, we'll be sure and, and report those out to you. But that's kind of preliminarily what we're, some of the information we're getting. We also are going to be able to share some pieces either through screeners and things like that, like FastBridge, okay? And then the third area in the accreditation determination area will be compliance. And we've always had compliance measures, and there's quite a number of those. Things such as chronic absenteeism, individual plans of study, and attendance, or not attendance, participation in state assessment. Those are all compliance measures. And so those will stay as part of the accreditation process. They are going to review those and see which ones directly impact school improvement and which ones are just compliance measures outside of the accreditation process. So that will be something else that we'll be getting information on as the state continues to refine the KISA 2.0 process.
Okay. How do we measure success? I mean, I, I know the world lives by data. You know, we, everything, everything lives by data. But we're, it's just, it's just a frustration to me. You know, we talk about assessments, and it's not just us. It's every school district in the nation. You know, assessments, standard, you know, standardized tests and all those things, but we're dealing with children. And then I read where, you know, Harvard has remedial English now. You know, and I'm going, you gotta be kidding me, you know? And, and so, but it just boils down to some questions that, I hear everything you're saying, and I know you're, as a district, we're doing those things that the state requires, and they're throwing things at us. I just, I'm voicing a frustration, I guess, more than a question, because we're dealing with children, human beings. We want them to learn how to learn, not just our brownie points for us. Hey, we improved 18%. Oh, I don't even know. But it just, I get all this, and I know we're, but...
To Amy's credit, I will address that a little bit, to the extent that she works hard with the principals, and they try to individualize it and personalize it and make it apply to what we're doing. Because it is very complicated, and we are a very complicated district. And when, we get very frustrated with the state's expectations because they need to know who we are and what we're dealing with, and, and how difficult of a task that we, we take on every day, and we do it with professionalism, and we do it with the greatest effort of most districts that you see across the state. And so you're right on. We just do the best that we can, and Amy stays in tune with, we have to follow these steps. What she's presenting is what the state does require. But she brings it back and makes it meaningful to our district, and then we try to implement it in each building and to the lives of each child so that we can see that success.
Right.
It's not easy. It's not easy.
I, I get that. And then another thing we have to deal with is attendance. That's a, that is, that's just getting kids to school.
And I, I know this isn't going to directly answer your question, but I think this is...
If you found a question in there, I'm proud of you. So...
Yeah. I, I think that, I, I would hope I'd see some head nods out there. Here's, here's where the success comes in. When you have a student that refuses to get out of the car because school's a scary place for them, and they come into school by themselves and high-five and hug their teacher and get to the classroom, that's success. And when you have a parent-teacher conference where maybe that student is in the high-risk category, but they increase their fluency rate by 20 words per minute, that's, that's where we gain, that's where we feel our success. So I, I think you're exactly right. You can't measure every student on only their CAPS score. It makes me think of, I know you've seen this cartoon where it says, there's, there's all these animals out there, and there's like an elephant and a, and a, and a bird and a dog, and it said, hey, go climb that tree, meaning the state assessment is the tree. And some are at a disadvantage to do that.
Right.
And so just looking at each, each individual child, and if, sometimes their success will be seen in their language scores that come in from KELPA, and maybe they raise their speaking score because that's going to be one of the first things that we see in our student's success, is raising their speaking scores. Or just getting them in the door because, you know what, they refused to get out of the car and needed some help with that every day. So yes, these are, these are accreditation pieces, but principals would say they see, they get to see success every single day that is nowhere measured in here.
I was gonna say, that's one of the things I've enjoyed about being on Bright Beginnings Advisory. Because I get to hear reports on all those things, not just math and, but the social, emotional, and seeing the growth in all the kids. And it'd be great if we could do that all the way through 12th, and I know that would be very difficult to do. But, I mean, we get to, I, I mean, it excites me to see things like that, that are major barriers that kids have overcome because of those kind of things.
Yeah.
But it would be very hard to show kind of throughout those, even though the teachers get to see it and who's working with them, so.
Yeah. Well, what I do know is that we have a whole host, a district full of dedicated people who are willing to go to the car and help the student come in. They're willing to be there at the door and give them a hug because that's what they need that day. And then we can get them in the classroom, and once they feel safe and in our environment, they'll be ready, they'll be more ready to learn. So, yeah. So for the accreditation process for KISA 2.0, these are really the three areas that, that we'll be looking at. And like I had said, the student outcome piece, we'll, we'll get a little more information on that in the future. I look for some of the compliance things to really be drilled down a little bit more so that they're more applicable to accreditation itself. And those will be released as well, I believe, in September from KSDE. I kind of mentioned this already, but we were in year one this year. So we had one big, big goal, and that was to write our actual action plan. And so, so for this year, we reported our compliance and we're evaluated on that. But the big, the big piece of what we took on this year was really writing that action plan. And I have to give kudos to the administrators and building leadership teams in the district because without them, we could not have come up with the action plan that really fits the needs of our district. And so we gathered a lot of information from them, and then we met one-on-one with a representative from KSDE who we shared that information with. They gave us some feedback on some of the ideas that we had towards our action plan. And then we met with other school districts. We, our peer review team was from Gary County Liberal and Garden City and us. So we were very like districts, and they planned it that way. So it actually was, was really great. We met in sublet. We went through our results. We got to hear what they were planning on doing and worked together to develop that action plan. And I'll go, I'll be going through some of the specifics of the action plan here in a minute. Next year, we'll be looking at our action plan again and then reviewing with the state and our peer teams on the implementation of that. So we won't yet be held to those student outcome measures. However, they will be looking at, did we meet the goals that we had set in our action plan? Are we taking steps in that direction?
Amy, I, quick, oh, sorry. So kind of back to that first slide on the student outcomes.
Yes.
Is the school improvement going to be based on the student outcomes, or is that going to be measured in two different ways?
It's going to, you'll see here in a minute. Right now, right now, our targets are leading towards that, but our goals are student outcome goals.
Okay. So they're, they're...
They're intertwined. Yes. There, there would be no way that we could separate all of these things, just like when we get to the model here in a minute. There's lots of parts of that, but there's no way, there's no silos there. Everything is intertwined. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes. And then in the 26-27 school year, we, of course, will have the compliance measures, the action plan and its implementation, and we'll be adjusting that as we're, as we're reaching our targets. And then those outcomes will be part of that then in the 26-27 school year. So I, I believe you've seen this a couple of times, but I just want to go through it a little bit again. So as part of the KISA 2.0 model, the state identified four fundamental categories that they felt led to the greatest student achievement and increasing student achievement. And the first one of those fundamentals is structured literacy. So I know you hear a lot about letters, but that science of reading and incorporating that into reading instruction is kind of what that's all about up there. Training teachers on the science of reading. And then standards alignment would be ensuring that we have our, our standards aligned for grade level instruction and that we have looked at our resources, so whether that's our, our reading resource or, or math resources, and ensured that those align with our, with the state standards. And when those were adopted, they were thoroughly vetted to ensure that they did. Now, there is not a single program that we could ever buy that would, that would directly align everything. With any program, you're gonna have to add a little bit of jazz to it to make sure you meet your standards. So that's what that is, that, that fundamental is, is basically talking about. And then the third one is balanced assessment, and that is assessing students in a variety of ways, including using a screener, which we use FastBridge, using formatives, which are assessments that the teachers do in the minute where they're, when they're in the classroom. So that could be part of the resource adoption, or it could be those checks for understanding that they do as they're teaching. So it's ensuring that we have all those things in place. Because if every teacher just waited until March when they took the state assessment, it would be willy-nilly. Whether or not anybody knew anything, you wouldn't know, right? It'd be guessing. So, and we felt as though that was, that was fairly strong in our, in our district, having a variety of assessments. Number four is actually where we chose as a district to place our emphasis because the state had, had suggested that we choose one of these fundamentals and then one or two structures. Because we can't do them all. It's that do one well, and they're all related, so you can't just do one, but do one really well. So we focused on that quality of instruction. And that would include just having high expectations and common expectations for your students and what good, strong instruction looks like. And part of the reason that this one stuck out, and I'll show you in a moment some of the feedback we got from buildings, is that throughout BLT conversations and principal conversations, there sometimes is a little bit of a disconnect about what mastery looks like on standards and having common high expectations. And what mastery looks like in one person's second-grade classroom is the same as what mastery looks like in another person's second-grade classroom, and both of those are rigorous enough to meet that grade level standard for second grade. So that's kind of embodied in there, as well as implementing instruction that ties the standard and the resource. So in a moment, you'll hear about some action steps that we're going to take to help align those two things. Those are the four fun, big, big idea fundamentals. And then over here on the right-hand side, you'll see that there are some structures and lead indicators. So that what they wanted us to do, and it was a really great activity for all of the, the schools, was to look and say, and rate ourself as a district and say, is our resource allocation where it needs to be to support quality instruction and balanced assessment? And so we went through each one of those structures. Resource allocation, educator evaluation, professional learning, professional collaboration, tiered systems of support, and family-community partnerships. And each building actually rated how they believed as a building those structures were supporting their efforts. And all of them came out pretty good as a district. And, um, all of them came out pretty good as a district. But we did focus in on two areas that we really wanted to beef up because we believed that that was going to make the biggest difference for our kids. And that was part of this process. And then the last part of the process is to set targets, goals, and action steps to help us meet those. Any questions? That was a lot. I get it, that's a lot. Okay. So, in order to do that, um, I think you, you probably know this about me, but, and Dr. Dirksen alluded to it. I'm a big proponent of you need to listen to the people in the trenches because, um, I can make assumptions about where people are, but the principals are right there in the classroom every day and more so the teachers are, are there every day. And they know where, what they need. And, um, so we, we actually did surveys and had building leadership teams go back to their buildings and provide information for us. And that is how we landed on these two areas of choice to impact our student achievement. And again, it's not to say that those other structures or fundamentals are not important. We just needed to prioritize and provide clarity for, for movement forward. So, um, some of the needs, um, that came up, um, is we have fidelity to our MTSS structures, but I kind of mentioned that tier, that tier one instruction. Do we all have common expectations, um, of our students and a common understanding of those standards? So, again, if teacher A and teacher B had, had something that signified mastery of second grade ELA standard, whatever it may be, are they the same? Are we calibrated in that? Um, because we have people that are working really, really hard, but sometimes we're not seeing that needle move. So, we want to look at, do we all have the same understanding of what that standard is asking us to do? That's kind of highlighted there in the tiered systems of support. And, um, we chose to calibrate our expectations at, um, performance level descriptor, which is a state assessment term, um, three. So, upper level two is a basic knowledge. So, we want to know what gets our kids just past that basic knowledge on each one of those standards. So, that's an area that we would like to develop deeper. On the collaboration side of things, um, we really have, um, been working with the instructional coaches on intentional planning and the use of that data, whether it is state assessments, FastBridge, those formative assessments in the classroom, exit tickets, to use that information then and plan, um, that instruction passed, uh, for the next day. So, you know, really taking that information and not just turning the page and going, we did that lesson, we're moving on, but did we meet that standard of expectation? And then part of that too is, uh, we have great, great, great teachers who are helping lead professional learning communities and collaboration time on Wednesday. And what we heard, um, from the field is that they wanted some more training on facilitating those conversations and being, um, more effective teacher leaders. And the principals were feeling the same way. If we could build capacity within the people in our building to hold those, those strong lesson and instructional conversations, um, that would ramp up our, our instruction on a daily basis. Um, some of that, and I'm crossing a line here, but in a moment, I'm gonna talk to you about needs assessments. And that came up in the needs assessment because we have so many long-term subs or new, new teachers. Um, we need to build capacity within all of our staff to get everybody, um, ramped up to have those high expectations. So, as I mentioned, as a district, when we were asked to, um, narrow down our focus, um, we chose quality instruction as our fundamental. And then the two structures that we chose to focus on, um, were professional collaboration and tiered systems of support. We really feel like these two areas will be, um, we'll be able to target. Now, of course, if you look, you can't really do professional collaboration without professional learning. And you can't really evaluate your tiered systems of support without good evaluation. But we can't do it all. You know, we're gonna focus, we're gonna focus on one and, um, and hopefully make, make the impact there. I mentioned targets and these, these targets, um, coincide with feedback that we'll be receiving from the state. So, um, our six-month target for professional collaboration is to have, um, buildings streamline those PLC agendas and topics and align them with a sustainability timeline. So, um, Dr. Springsteen put together, um, a timeline for the whole district so that they know when all, when the assessments are coming, when, um, when we have collaboration time, what, what kind of, uh, PD might be happening in there. And so, we asked principals then to go in and based on what their building needs, set up their PLC agendas so that those things kind of go lockstep with each other. And we have really good alignment between those and their, their school improvement plans. The second target there, um, deals with leadership. And, um, we really focused on our principal PLC group. And I, I, I believe I've shared this before, but, um, we host, uh, once a month, a pre-K through 12 principal PLC group. And it's a time for principals to grow and learn together. And as part of that, um, we really want to calibrate their knowledge of instruction. And that comes from learning from each other. But also, um, we've arranged for, uh, a couple of consultants to come in and work with our leaders because we know that leadership can have a huge impact on student achievement. And so, um, just as you need to train your teachers to do the thing, whatever the thing is, your principals also need to understand that thing and know how to lead through that change. So, um, that is our six-month target. At about that same time, KSDE is going to come out and, and meet with us and give us feedback on, um, some of what we found out, um, through our work in that area. Our one-year target under professional, um, collaboration is training our PLC facilitators. I mentioned that building capacity in those leaders. And that actually started, um, here during the summer institute. They're offering, um, PLC facilitation training, um, for the second year in a row. And that is to help build capacity in those teacher leaders, um, to have those, um, those really good instructional conversations with their teams. Because principals can't be everywhere. Instructional coaches can't be everywhere, so we want to build that capacity in our teachers. And then lastly, uh, this is a perceptual piece of data, which we believe is really important, to gather, um, information from all of our staff, certified and classified. And the reason we chose this area is it deals specifically with, do you feel, um, able to have some autonomy to help, um, plan that and those instructional lessons? And do you feel like, um, you're, you're empowered to make those, those professional decisions as a, as a teacher? And also, do you feel like you have that collective efficacy with your team to go, yeah, we're in this together, we're gonna do this together, and we're all working together for a common goal? The second area is the tiered systems of support. And you'll see some similarities here. So, our six-month target, um, is to engage in a success analysis, um, using the state assessment data as well as fall, um, academic and behavior screening data. So, that would be FAST, FAST, FastBridge data. And, um, the reason that a success analysis is different than, um, some other data analysis pieces is that you don't go at it with a deficit mind. Um, you go through a success analysis by looking at, what are we doing well? And how can we build upon that success? Do we have pockets of success that we can replicate? What is happening there that is causing that? So, um, actually tomorrow, um, I'll be leading the principals through their second success analysis. We're doing math so that we can learn that process of doing a success analysis. And, um, it, it actually is, is very inspiring because there is, there are some real pockets of things that we need to replicate in our district. We have some standards that we can do well, and you can build upon those standards to, to get success in other, other areas. Um, and then the, again, the principal PLC group. Um, we're, we're trying to, to balance with our district, district action plan, um, adult behaviors in the classroom and adult behaviors in the leadership. So, that includes, um, us at the district level as well. Our one-year, um, target there is to look at aggressive growth across grade levels. And the reason that we chose to look at that type of report is we can pull just kind of like what, Jeff, what you were referring to. You can pull proficiency rates. And it can, it can be pretty depressing because it's looking at who hits this threshold, right? It doesn't have anything to do with who's gaining. And so, there are some reports through FastBridge that look at which students have made the most aggressive growth. And that's what we want to look at. Which students made that aggressive growth? What did the teachers do to cause that? What did leaders do to cause that? And what did our district system do to cause that aggressive growth? And then finally, um, another piece of perception data that, that we're going to fold in. And it is the, um, IMIS. It's the overall implementation of, um, the MTSS process. So, tier one, tier two, and tier three instruction in all three of those areas. And the reason that is really important is we've seen some stagnation specifically in the area of tier one instruction. So, that is the instruction that every single child gets. It's the teacher gets up and does 60 minutes of reading. We've seen some stagnation in that area as a district and, and we want to work on that through the things that were listed above there. Whew, that was a lot too. Any questions over the plan? So, the plan, quality instruction, tiered systems of support, collaboration, those are our goals for, our targets for those areas.
I, I really appreciate the emphasis on collaboration because I know and I don't care what industry you're in, people taught, people who are doing the work in the trenches talking is one of the most. I think the challenge for management is always, do we keep it collaborative? Or do we, you know, all of a sudden, we've taken over, you know, the leadership of it? So, I think this collaboration, that word is vital. And I, I really appreciate the emphasis on it. Thank you.
Yeah. Um, I will share this, uh, this week or last week in, um, the summer institute, we had some amazing instructional coaches and teachers leading sessions on lesson study. And that, that, um, concept of lesson study does exactly what you're talking about. Gets teachers together to look at standards and instruction and how can they collaboratively plan for future instruction, instruction and use each other's strengths to do so. So, um, nobody can shut their door and pretend like, you know, I'm gonna do this on my own. It really is about that collaborative nature. And, um, I know several of the principals were in the three, five math one, and we were like, wow, this is, this is so cool. So, um, it's, it, it, the instructional coaches did an amazing job of putting that together and emphasizing that. And so, you fold that in with that facilit, those facilitation skills. And I think, you know, you'll see some, some great, some good gains there in the instructional, um, intentional instructional planning. So, okay. So, then, um, the last little pit, bit that I'm gonna hit on, um, I just wanted to update you on the district goals. Um, and Dr. Springsteen will come as soon as our state assessment, our chronic absenteeism scores and everything come in. Uh, he'll give you an update on those scores. They have not been released yet. But, um, our goal, um, has changed just a little bit. If you remember from the strategic plan, uh, the goal was set at, um, 80% of students in that level three, which is, um, it's like the, the, above the basic. And we're not saying that we want students at a basic level. However, what we're trying to do is get kids transition through those tables. So, we set two new goals, um, at the district level. Um, one is in the area of ELA and one is in the area of math. And it is getting those kids, um, to that basic level of understanding with us concentrating on what does mastery look like at a, a, a performance level three, uh, on the state assessment. That is going to coincide with the student outcomes piece that you were talking about. Uh, we believe that'll coincide very well. The other half of that, which is what we alluded to a little bit too, is chronic absenteeism has been an issue, not just in our district, but across the nation. Even before COVID a little bit, but since COVID, it, it just seems to be such a huge struggle. And, um, so we have set, um, chronic absenteeism goals at all levels. Each building also has an individual, um, goal for attendance. And, um, we, we, you can see which each one of those levels are set at. We chose to do it that way because, um, as you can tell, absenteeism, um, gets larger as the kids get older because, you know, I, I mean, I think they just, they just choose not to come to school. And at least at the elementary, somebody's usually getting them there. But, um, so we've sat the, we've set those goals. And, um, this year, Mr. Turner and, um, Joaquin have been going to the schools and visiting with the principals. We're putting things in place so there's regular check-ins on that chronic absenteeism. And, um, the, I'll, I'm gonna show you something and then I'll, I'll give you a caveat.
Are these percentages, the present percentages that?
No. That's the goal. Um, I'm gonna show you the present percentages in the next slide. But there's a little caveat to that. So, let me jump over there. Um, in that light green color are the chronic absenteeism, um, percentages as, as reported by the state. And the reason we're using that is, you guys, it gets really complicated to figure chronic absenteeism because of the number of students who graduate. We just decided that part of compliance is based on the AMAS state report. So, we're going to use those state numbers as our goal spots so that we're, we're comparing apples to apples. Um, so elementary currently is 11.8, Ryan. That would have been at the end of last year. I was really, really hoping that we would have this year's numbers. And to be honest, the elementary one started showing up on my computer this afternoon, but I didn't feel comfortable pulling them in here yet. At the elementary level, it looks like we're dropping about a percent from there, but don't quote me on that yet because they were literally like rolling in today. So, um, those are at the end of last year.
And, and I know, I know Matt shared this on many occasions, so forgive me. What counts as, uh, chronic absenteeism? Is it a half? It's not a full day, it's a half day? Or is it if you're out of school?
If you're out of, if you're out of school, it counts towards.
Any part of the day?
That. Well, except, go ahead, Matt. It gets really, it gets really complicated.
Well, okay.
Yeah.
Well, at, at the elementary level, they miss the full section in the morning or afternoon. It constitutes a half day.
Okay.
At the middle schools, it's missing five of the eight periods throughout the day because the definition's a substantial portion of the day. High school, it's three out of five. And to Amy's point, when the state does it, they do active stu, or, or active and inactive students. So, a kid that went two weeks gets counted towards our end result. So, if in two weeks they missed three times, they're chronically absent. So, it's tough, but, uh, I, I think Amy's right. I think we'll see a little decline in elementary, but I think we'll see a uptick in middle and high school. So, work to be done.
And it does get real, it does get really difficult when, um, yeah, kids leave for a doctor's appointment and they come back in at five after 12 or, yeah. So, um, so, so as I mentioned, those are the, the numbers. When the, the current numbers come. When the, the current numbers come in, we'll be sure and stick those in. We can review if, if we have them or when Dr. Springsteen reports on the state assessment scores, we'll, we can bring that back to you as well. So the, then the district goals, that, those, those percentages, so the elementary upper level, PLD two, those are as of also 23, 24 because the 24, 25 state assessments have not been released yet. So we'll have updates on those when he comes to present. I believe it's in August or September. So again, work, work to be done, work to be done. But I, I know that I tend to wear my rose colored glasses, but when you, when you see the, the work that is happening, the teachers that were planning, I sat in that math session and just listened. I was at a table with some Miller teachers and there were, there were Lynn teachers sitting beside there. And the collaboration that was happening between those two groups of teachers was amazing. And when you get third grade teachers and fourth grade teachers with other teachers talking about what mastery looks like to them and you can align that with the state standards, you can't go anywhere but, but up. Okay, so for next year, this is what will be happening next year is we'll continue to meet with the DLT. The building leadership teams will continue to meet to align their action plans and review data. And then as I mentioned, that our six-month check-in comes up really fast. It's going to be September 11th before we know it. Hence why some of this work we're trying to do during the summer in getting our principals and teachers up to speed on some of those things. And then we will meet with our peer review groups in February. And again, that is really exciting and we don't just meet with them in February. I know our, our individual plan of study group has been meeting with Geary County off and on because they use school links like we do. And so we have, we have formed some really good relationships with other districts and we're able to take what's working for them and, and gain some valuable feedback and ideas. And then the BLTs will continue to work their plans. We will, at the end of next year, we will actually update our plan. So we'll look and say, did we meet our targets? What kinds of next steps do we need to put in place to continue our journey of improvement? And, and then we'll, we'll turn that updated plan into KSTE. I will say this, I wondered how closely, you know, people review the plan. And when we originally submitted our plan, we got an email back asking for clarification. And when, when the state said that they were going to support us on our plans, you always wonder what that looked like. I literally got a call from our urban representative from his cell phone and said, call me back. I have a few questions for clarification. And my thought was if he has questions for clarification, our site councils, our parents, our board are probably going to also have questions for clarification. So he helped us work through that, helped us reword a few things. We didn't change anything. He said, I think if you just changed the wording a little bit. So I just, I've, I've been very impressed with the support that we've also received because they've given us valuable feedback and we'll continue that into next year. Questions? I know that was a lot. Well, thank you very much. I am going to switch gears if that's all right. But I will tell you that these two things you'll see are, are connected as they should be. The next item on the agenda is the needs assessment. And each building, every year, as part of the requirements from a House bill that was from 2022, are required to fill out a needs assessment. And that needs assessment is not only posted, but it's shared with Hammer's office and is to be used as budget is created. And so again, this is a great way to gather that feedback from the individual building leaders, their BLTs, maybe their site councils about where they see needs lying. And we very specifically sent a survey with some questions on it, but we also posed the actual spreadsheet that you'll see on the website. And it asked for barriers to academic progress and timelines and budget considerations. I took the liberty of also including strengths. And I talked to the others in my office about this a little bit. The reason that I thought it was important to do that is sometimes when you do something like this, your strengths need to be sustained and need to be budgetary considerations because they're a strength for a reason. Because someone's put emphasis on that. And if you took that emphasis away, they might no longer be strengths. So I thought it was important to add this, this piece as well. So we looked at academic staffing and family engagement as areas. And then I know that Mr. Scheck and Hammer have been going around to the buildings, visiting individually with each building in person about other needs. So those, those pieces aren't reflected here. This is just from the survey in the spreadsheet that I had the, the principals fill out. And you might notice that some of these things are crossing over from the district plan, which was very intentional. Because if we heard it as we created the district plan and we heard it as we were asking for needs for the budget, those are really important things that, that need to coincide. So a couple of the strengths that came up with academics is that we do have data-driven instruction and we have the interventions. We have a collaborative culture, but we need to build that culture up so that it's more intentional. And then we do have strong professional development and that's a testament to Kelly Clark and her work instructional coaches and Dr. Springsteen. Some of the barriers that we have continued to experience are in the area of tier one, fidelity and rigor. And I think I already explained that quite a lot in the previous presentation, that, that rigor and making sure that we have those high expectations and common expectations is important as well as ensuring that we're able to get the intensive support needed in tier two and tier three instruction within the classroom so we can support the, the teachers. Time, of course, is always a barrier. It's been on that list since, well, probably since you started doing this in 2022. And that includes time for, time for analysis, time for collaboration. And just the teaching, the, the teacher training demands with so many new and veteran teachers and things like science of reading and Kansas Math Project. Those are all training opportunities that our teachers have and they're needed. So we want to, we want to continue to emphasize the importance of that. So you'll see some of those barriers down here in the budget consideration area. Things like ensuring that we continue to have budgeting for FastBridge, EduClimer. So we have a good place to house data and collect data, but also time for PLCs and collaborative, collaborative planning time for our teachers as well as support for those social emotional learning programs. So if you remember, I think it was last month, we came to you with a character strong proposal for tier two and tier three for our counselors. Another direct tie to this, this needs assessment. Under staffing, we need to give a shout out to HR for seeing that we were going to need to grow our own because there just aren't certified teachers, you know, coming out of the woodwork in any district. And so knowing that we need to grow those teacher apprentices and those are all strengths for us. Strengths from administrative support for them and the knowledge that our principals have. Again, the barriers, just the limited, the limited paraprofessionals, limited teachers. I think staffing all the way around is, is difficult. A couple of considerations that we took to Hammer is paraprofessional funding and ensuring that we maintain that level of, of support for our teachers because they've got a hard job and, and kids need that, need that support. So ensuring we keep that going. And then administrative support and mentorship. So making sure that our principals have what they need to be good leaders. Finally, under the area of family needs, people really highlighted how much they appreciate things like parent square, which will be taking over for talking points so that we can communicate directly with our families. And just having lots of opportunities for parent involvement. A couple of barriers and budget considerations are finding ways to maintain parent involvement. It's really, really strong in pre-K and it kind of starts dwindling as kids get older. And how can we ensure that that parent involvement stays strong? And, and we, we continue to work with, with our parents all the way up through 12th grade. And then under the considerations, just those technology platforms and support for program support, whether that's Title I, awards ceremonies, things that'll get parents involved and making sure that we're funding those adequately. Are there any questions over the, the needs assessment summary? Okay. This will end the Amy Loader Show. Thank you all for your time. Please reach out if you ever have any questions.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Next up, we have Carrie with public information.
Madam Chair, Board, Dr. Dirksen. So I'm here on one of my last signage projects. We're finishing up with Ross. That doesn't mean that throughout the next year, we may have a couple of things that we'll come back and talk about, but I'm anxious to walk you through this. At the front entry, you see that we're looking at making a change there. We'll remove the clock, change up the paint there and then have the lettering Ross Elementary with our mascot. And then we have the monument sign. If you're familiar with that area, the mountain monument sign is a bit to the north from the school. So when we looked at the overall, we felt like what the presence on the front, this monument sign would take care of really branding the school. And then at the playground, you'll have the big sign. It's larger than at the other schools because of the real estate they have there. And then also another large pan of it back with the bus and staff entrance. And then the directional sign, which will be on, this will be on Ross Boulevard. So it will be near the staff and bus entrance, but it will also indicate where the main entrance is. So again, that signage to kind of highlight everything for the building and to brand it. The total for that is $52,361.68. And I would have you note that Lumineaux signs, they do hold a state contract for commercial signage services. Do you have any questions?
I'll make a motion.
Good.
Second.
We've got a motion by Jared and a second by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you very much. And then I would like to highlight a trip that we took last week. We went to the Rico Center in Boulder, Colorado to take a look at a printer for print solutions in our print center. I'm a farm girl, so when you buy equipment, you typically do not purchase the biggest pieces of equipment you need in the same year. And historically, we've done that with the printers. So what I've suggested, they agreed, our print machine, our colored print machine is in pretty good shape. So we're going to extend that lease agreement for 2.5 years and then purchase another one. So now we will have two colored printers in our print center so we can be more efficient, continue with the growth that we've had because we have been printing a lot, more sophisticated projects. And then we'll be doing something every two and a half years instead of two big machines every five years. So that's why we went in that direction. They extended to us the opportunity to come out and see how the machine would work. We worked with, with print specialists in their center. It's a customer service center. All day long, Karen was madly taking notes and learning more things. And then we also have a great network with that. We have an opportunity to maybe explore different ways to purchase stock. So that's always a challenge for us. So that was, that was very helpful for us. I know you have the information in front of you. I think, let me make sure I've got it right here in front of me. So the proposal, I wanted to go over that a little bit. What we've historically paid annually is $64,237. We would now be considering $79,308. That is an annual lease amount. And so there is an increase of that for about 15 some thousand dollars. Do you have any questions?
We don't outsource much printing, do we?
No, we do not. We do not. More and more printing coming our way. We do mini mags for recruitment. We do those type of things for CTE, different periodicals for the high school. We just continue to get more and more requests for printing.
Well, I remember when I first came on the board, we were outsourcing over, over half and it was.
Yeah, it's pretty.
It's pretty dead gum expensive.
I hate to bring this up, but during, during COVID, we printed a million sheets and we didn't outsource any of that.
But I appreciate the work going into this. I'll make a motion to accept these.
Okay, motion by Jeff, second by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much. And the next, I have Regina joining me here. I'll let you get set up. She has put together all of the work on the new district site. So I want her to walk you through the website.
Okay, I'm just going to walk you through some of the changes that will be happening from the current site to the new site. Under the about us, the Board of Education page, wrong page. The Board of Education page has changed. I added your picture. And on here, it'll have all your, the goals for the board. There is a link that takes you to the page with all your goals. And the district calendar, your policies, the link to the YouTube page so they can watch the live streams. A little further down, there's the agendas. They're linked up in red and the minutes and the live stream videos. The policies are also linked up on there. And then your pictures and your email addresses. I'm going to jump over to the parent square tab. And the tab, it tells you what parent square is about, how to download it. There's two red words. You probably can't see it from here, but it's the downloads for your phone, how to register, some of the features. There's two video, two tutorials in English and Spanish, frequently asked questions and the getting started guide and parents, parent tips. And the parent square tab can be found also under the popular links in the right upper corner and on all the school sites. The staff page. The staff page. The login will no longer be a generic login that everybody uses. If you are registered for Parent Square app, then that is your username and login. And I know it has the Google little symbol at the bottom, but that does not work. It won't let you in. So, if you need to look at the staff page, you get in through the Parent Square. In the red bar, there's some icons that are links to the most popular resources that people look for on our site, such as nutrition, Skyward, and the staff directory. Further down, the picture of the two boys. If you click on it, this is the link to the employment page. Has information about the district. And then if you click on the first picture, that's our current job listings. Next is employee benefits, substitute teacher information, special ed jobs. The next one is our building, and it takes you to the About Us page. If you go down to the school info, the first tab, it has the pre-K in elementary schools. The schools in red are the links to the school pages. And it has all the principals. The Strategic Action Plan is next, and you can click on the rectangle, and it'll take you to all the PDFs. Further down is the programs and services offered in the district and our student count numbers for this past school year. The little boy on the right is the enrollment link. Here's the information for enrollment in July. The pre-K, it gives you the information for July 15th and 16th, and the information you need to bring to enroll for Bright Beginnings. And the other K through 12 enrollment, it has the Skyward link if you want to enroll online, and the in-person civic center, July 15th and 16th. It also has the phone number to call IT in case you have problems remembering your Skyward The sports forums, Skyward, Family Access, School Supply List, and Enrollment, frequently asked questions are on here also. And sometimes we get requests for transcripts, and so the forum for the registrar at the high school is on here also. I highlighted four of the priorities in the district, and one is closing the achievement gap. It takes you to the curriculum page. Next is safety. It takes you to the safety and security page. Early literacy and college career and military readiness, that takes you to the high school academic and CTE programs. And below that is latest news and current upcoming events. In the upper right-hand corner, there is a rectangular box with an A. It pulls up 150 different languages, and you can change the site to whatever language you want. Next to that is popular links, and you can find the employment, enrollment, staff directory, Parent Square in there, and then the schools. Under elementary is Bright Beginnings. I built the pages as an About Us page, so up at the top, you notice there aren't any tabs except for the home tab. The other tabs that would normally be up here are the icons below the school picture. And this summer, I will be going around and taking updated pictures of the schools. Below that is information about the school, the principal's picture in their bio, and then some more information. And Lynn Elementary is a different color, just so you can see that not all of them are Sewell Elementary is blue. And in the bar, the Parent Square logo is in there on all of the pages.
That seems much easier to navigate.
Oh, yeah. Nice.
You bet.
Thanks, thank you.
The middle schools, Comanche, it's blue, and if some of you are moving to a different building, you'll be updated in July. Dodds Elementary School is red. The high school page is built more like the district homepage. The first picture, it does take you to the principals, and it has information about the school. The next one is the student support team, which is the counselors and the social workers. And the next picture is clubs and activities. I highlighted some of the programs that are offered at the high school. The first one is the dual enrollment opportunities, and it takes you to the college. The next one is the CTE programs. And the links for the CTE, they do tell you what classes are offered. And the next one is youth entrepreneurs and curriculum. So, the staff directory. The way I build the staff directory now on our current site, I type everybody in and I add their picture. And when somebody leaves, I delete them. So, with the Parent Square app, it works with Skyward. If somebody makes changes in Skyward during the day, that night, it syncs up with our website, and it adds and deletes them overnight. So, I don't have to add and delete anybody. There are some quirks that some things aren't lining up, and they're not moving incorrectly. So, we've decided to turn the staff directories off so that they're not visible until I can work with technology to get things straightened up. So, the site is not live yet. It was supposed to go live this morning, but technology wasn't quite ready to get everything done, so maybe next Monday.
She makes it sound very easy, and there's been a few things behind the scene that she's been battling a bit, and we're working with IT, and part of that is how everybody's entered into Skyward makes a big difference in how they pull in here, and that affects the titles. So, we certainly don't want the staff directory to be live with incorrect titles for our staff. So, even if we go live, we may have that staff directory turned off for a few days until we get everything ironed out. Great job.
Nice job, Regina. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you. Thank you. Regina's done an outstanding job, and as you could tell, she's been intimately involved in this whole process and knows it quite well, and has dedicated a abundance of time to make this successful. And we're convinced it's a great improvement in the district and will be more accessible for the public. And I just can't say enough about how outstanding a job she's done. Plus, this was her first attempt at public speaking, and I think we're gonna sign her up for more.
Go ahead, Hammer.
Good evening, Board members. I have a few items to bring to your attention tonight, to ask for your approval. First on the list is boilers for two of our buildings. This was on the Capital Outlay list from the fall. It's just taken a while to get the, get it spec'd and get it bid. But basically, we're proposing to put in a new boiler at Comanche and another one at Ross. The total price for those is $663,177. We've used these guys before. They've done good work for us. Just part of the rotation that we've been on. I don't, I don't want to rush past this, but it's just kind of, you know, we pick a couple of these every year. We don't replace them because we feel like it. You always try to balance that, the useful life of an asset. You don't necessarily want to run them to complete failure because that creates problems, but you certainly don't want to replace them before the end of their useful life, which is why we use some of the consultants we do, and we have a plan. And we do tweak that. If things are coming along, we've pushed things off. So, I don't want you thinking we just automatically throw it, you know, a dartboard and say, oh, these are the ones we're gonna get this next year. It's worked very well for us, but this is part of that rotation that we're on. Any questions on that?
I'll make a motion for approval.
All right, we've got a motion by Tammy and a second by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Thank you. Next on the list, this has been on the Capital Outlay list for a while. It's been pushed back because it hasn't been a priority like some of the others a couple of years ago. We've walked through it. It's actually concrete paving in two different locations, so let me, let me walk you through that a little bit. If you would turn to page, page 83, it's got a drawing there. That is Beeson. Now, this was not actually on the Capital Outlay list until recently. What we're proposing here, you can see the gray drive. That is a brand-new entrance to separate the bus traffic from all the rest of the traffic. So, this is more of a safety enhancement issue. It hasn't been out there for a long time. There is no, we're not replacing old asphalt. This is a brand-new drive. The area in green is a sidewalk, so the darker gray is the bus drive. You can kind of see the light with the speckles on it. That's, that's a sidewalk that then takes you out to Beeson, but there's no sidewalk once you get to Beeson. So, what we propose, we had them bid it separate just to see it, it wasn't that much more to put that sidewalk in. So, our proposal, which I'll wrap this all up here in a minute, is to do all the gray and the green in there. So, that gets us a brand-new drive that doesn't exist, allows us to separate bus traffic, and then at least puts a sidewalk parallel to Beeson to the end of our property. And then if you flip over to the other page, on page 84, that's Lynn. And that's the one that's been on there for a while. That's actually redoing everything there. So, that entire gray area, and you can see it goes all the way around in the back there, that's actually a fire lane back there. It's asphalt, it's an asphalt playground that, it's actually in pretty bad shape. So, rather than just, and we patched it last year, we had some, some trips and falls because of the condition of it. So, we're actually proposing that we redo the entire parking lot, the drive, everything in the back. And then there were some alternates. The orange area is parking today, but it's gravel, it's not asphalt. And then the blue area as well. So, taking what we have and going back with concrete that basically covers everything all around Lynn, if that makes sense. Does the, does the map itself make sense, what we're doing? So, I don't want, you know, if I say parking lot, it's not actually parking lot. You can see there's a substantial amount of square feet. And the area in the back, I don't want to underplay how important that is because of the, and several people have been, look like you're ready to say something.
What you're proposing at Lynn is what we've already done at Beeson. We did that, we did that.
It must have been before my time, but that's right, yeah. Lynn is asphalt.
I'm right on that, aren't I? Yeah, I know I am. I know I am. I'm right on that. And so, we're just catching up with one. And the one at Beeson was an issue of safety, which, because Beeson has that extended drive, it is different than the one at Lynn. Lynn, they're twins, but they're not. I mean, there are some differences. So, but this came up, and that was, Hammer looked at it pretty thoroughly, and this was a solution that I think everybody felt would be in the best interest of safety. So, I appreciate the combination of the two.
Well, it worked better because you've got a fair amount of mobilization to get them out there for Lynn anyway, and so just trying to take advantage of, of using the contractor's time and materials while they're here in town. And we, we actually tried to bid this four, six weeks ago. We didn't get any, any bids on it. Then two contractors approached us, so we bid it again, and we only got the one bid. But it is, it is in line with, this is the same contractor that did the high school. So, they, I mean, they know what they're doing, they, they charge a reasonable rate. It's not excessive. It's not very exciting, spending money on concrete, but it should be there for a long time. So, this puts all of those together in one package with one contractor. Any questions on that?
Like you say, it's hard to spend money on concrete, but we need to.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion, we accept the bids.
Okay.
For Beeson and Lynn.
Okay. Motion by Jeff and a second by Ryan. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you. Next is probably less exciting than concrete, but maybe more necessary. And that has to do with our, our insurance. Renewing that again, we looked at a couple different options. Not, I visited with some folks this last fall who were going to come back in the spring and give us a proposal, and when I tried calling them, I couldn't get them to return my call, so they might have had a change of heart. So, we did not get a lot done with another insurance agency, but we did look at different deductibles, which, there were some proposals here, but the savings on, on premiums versus putting more at risk for a deductible doesn't make a lot of sense. Doesn't, didn't make any sense to me. So, what we're asking for, and it's, it's not cheap. It's, it's a 17.8% increase. So, this is like the third year in a row we've, we've seen that. It's up $268,000 above where our premiums are this year. So, I can't tell you where it's gonna stop. We've, it's not like we haven't looked or tried different alternatives. We've looked at different insurance companies. We've looked at different deductibles, and I don't like saying it, but for what's available, this looks like the best deal. So, I am asking for your approval to renew at this new rate that's before you. And again, it's a $268,000 increase from where we are, which is 17.8%.
Is it, is the work comp, is that experience mod, payroll, all of the above?
All of the above.
Pardon, all of the above, okay. What is our experience mod? Ballpark. I love to put insurance agents on the spot.
I think she's ready for you.
Sure.
I think she's ready for you.
I do, too. I worked with her long enough to know. I'm just mostly interested in the experience mod.
.97, it went to 1.05.
It was, it is .97 now?
It was 97.
Okay.
And it is 1.05 now.
Okay. Okay. 1,200 employees, that's not bad.
Well, Lynn, do you want to make the motion?
I will. I'll make a motion, we accept the bid for our property and casualty insurance.
Okay. We have a motion by Jeff and a second by Jared. All in favor?
Aye.
Five zero.
Thank you. Next is, I'm asking Next is, um, I'm asking you to approve an agreement between us and the city. It, uh, will affect our building trades program. It has to deal with the old admin site lot. If, if you'll go to page one oh seven, I can talk you through this fairly quick. Um, right there in the middle of that page, it says A thirty-two, and then you'll see some lots where it says G and five, four, three, two, one. That's the old admin site. The proposal is to divide that up into five different lots. And then each year, the building trades program will build a house on la, on that lot, and then we will sell that and reuse that money to continue the program. We've been doing that out in rolling hills up until the year that we're in, and it's worked okay. Um, the, the difference is these lots here, there, there needs to be some work done. There's, and actually just flip over to page one oh nine, and it's a, it's a better itemized description of what needs to happen. So the roadways, there's got to be some work done there, underground utilities, uh, a retaining wall. And so it's kind of broken out. Uh, we're the developer in this instance, so we're responsible for the fifty thousand dirt work on the retaining wall. Uh, however, I would like to point out, if we don't do this, then we're also responsible for the underground utilities. So what this allows the city to, to do is to recoup those costs from, from, uh, the incremental tax that they get off of those houses as they're built. The taxpayer won't know a difference. They're not assessed more. That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying it goes to them first to get reimbursed, and then it goes to the other taxing entities. But it does allow for the development. It's something that they do, um, with other developers. We just don't usually think of ourselves as a developer. So this agreement allows them to move forward. Like I said, they've already approved it at their meeting. We just need to approve it, and that'll allow us to start next fall and, and with our next house. Otherwise, we don't have anywhere to go. I mean, we would still do this. It's just going to cost us more upfront.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. I'll second. Uh, motion by Jared and a second by Tammy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five zero.
Okay. And, and last for tonight, and, and we've done better at this when we buy classroom furniture or, or an asset that, that we're replacing. We've done better about asking your permission to go ahead and auction or sell or, or find a use for them. Um, but these, there's still things around the district that, that, you know, we can't just pick it up and throw it in the trash. So they've, the maintenance folks have gone around and come up with a list of items that they would like to be able to auction and get some value out of on Purple Wave. So that's what this last request is here.
I'll move. Second.
Motion by Ryan, second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Hammer. Mr. Scheck and Ms. Schrader.
Good evening. Um, so tonight, the Human Resources Office has one information item and four action items for you. And as we continue to fully transition several different areas in the district office, um, Tara has requested the opportunity to come before you as she transit, transitions over into the Executive Director of HR and present these items. Tara has also had a lot to do with a couple of these items that are on here. And ironically, um, that workers' comp situation and seeing that mod go up, one of the things that she has in here for the Classified Staff Handbook is because we have seen some situations occur because of lack of dress code, um, and especially footwear, um, with some, some things that have occurred. So that is going to be addressed in one of these items. So I'm going to turn it over to Tara.
Thank you, Jason. All right. Um, good evening, Dr. Dirksen, President Kilian and other board members. Um, I'm just going to plug this in really quick. Okay. As that transitions here. The first item that I have up for you this evening is information only, um, and that is on the, maybe. Technical difficulties.
Technology.
We actually even tried this earlier.
Yeah.
No reason.
It's been used a lot tonight. Maybe it's just tired.
Well, that definitely makes the visi, oh, there it goes, I think, maybe.
I think I'm gonna push it back. There we go. Oh, no.
Hello?
We get, no?
I didn't get my full nap today.
Want to try to eject this and re-plug it in.
It's going to be like when I was a kid. No, turn it that way. Turn it that way.
And then it's busted.
Hold it right there.
Now that I'm retired, I have a, I boycott technology. Completely. If we have to do anything, have you do it?
Sees it.
At least it's not just me.
And, uh, we actually plugged hers in before the board meeting.
Yeah, and it worked just fine.
It's not seeing mine either.
Can still do it without it. It's just not as though.
We'll go to Plan B.
Impressed we have a Plan B.
Yeah. Whoa.
That should be like.
God for the win. I'm not going to touch it. I'm not going to touch it again. Okay, so the first action item I have up for you all this evening is just the first read review of the twenty-five, twenty-six proposed, um, administrative policy changes. So in that, we have the different class, or the different handbooks, um, that we've got across the district, um, which would be Administrative Policy and Procedure, Classified Employee, Substitute, Paraprofessional, CDC, DLT, Leader-Mentor. And so I'm going to pull this up for you now. And I don't know why it's blocked out like that. It's just gonna, give me all the issues tonight. Um, so this is what that attachment looks like on that Google Sheet, which has, um, the link to all of the, the handbooks there for you in case you need to reference them. But down here along the bottom has every one on that list. And as we go through those, you'll see, um, the left-hand side will show you what the current wording is for the twenty-four, twenty-five. And then in the right-hand column, there would be the suggested changes for twenty-five, twenty-six. Um, the majority of them are just that, that anywhere it addresses twenty-four, twenty-five in the handbook, it's now adjusted to twenty-five, twenty-six. So the main one that I have potential changes to would be on the Classified Employee Handbook. So as we go through this, um, we kind of evaluate any issues that we had throughout the year to determine if we have strong policies and any issues as they arise. Um, and if we don't, what's the solution? Is it just modifying that policy to where it makes more sense and addresses more things? Um, and so through that process, there are a couple of things that we've come up with through this year, um, for potential changes for twenty-five, twenty-six. The first one would be a disciplinary procedures policy. We don't currently have one of those in place at this time. Um, and so essentially, I think that this would be helpful not only for our classified staff, but for our supervisors as well. As they go through some of these things, they can look at what constitutes the need for informal versus formal discipline, and what are their options when it comes to things like that? Um, especially for some of them that may not be so familiar with discipline. Obviously, it's a case-by-case basis depending on, um, the offense. You know, if it's so egregious that it reaches the point of automatic termination, then we have to go that route. But we have multiple steps, um, between the first offense and the last. So I really wanted to get in there and address some of those things specifically. Um, also talks about personal improvement plans, what goes into those, um, suspension options, demotion, immediate dismissal, and then grounds for disciplinary action. And this piece down here, um, it really goes into things that our, uh, classified employees can be disciplined for. Um, we never had anything like this in the past, and this is not an exhaustive list. But I think really when, because they have to acknowledge that they've gotten a copy of this and that they've seen this. So when they go through this list and they're, um, they're looking at this, they can kind of bear those things in mind um, as they, they conduct themselves from day to day. And if anybody has questions as we go through this, um, feel free. The next one is the dress code policy, which is the one that Jason alluded to. Um, just recently, over the past year, I want to say, I think we've had four or five at least claims, um, that have come up through, um, footwear issues. So we have crocs and things like that, um, slides, um, that have caused individuals to slip. And not that that's the only reason why, but we feel like some of them definitely could have been mitigated if we didn't have those kind of footwear things in place. So this is just kind of, we did have a policy on this, which was incredibly vague. It's there to the left. Um, and so we're really just expanding on it as to what the expectations are. Um, and then what we see in the buildings day to day. So if we're seeing super ripped-out jeans in the workplace and stuff like that, just, that just has that unprofessional look to it. Um, you know, we, we want to make sure that we, and, and if they're wearing jeans, nice jeans, and they have like a school T-shirt, that's definitely still fine. Um, but we, we're going for the professional look without trying to be overbearing about the entire thing. So it addresses some of that footwear in here. Um, obviously, we have a clause now for religious, medical, and cultural considerations, and then policy enforcement, which is kind of outlined on what the process is, um, which is really up to the building supervisor on what they deem as appropriate versus inappropriate. The next one down is holidays. Um, so really what we attempted to modify in this is when we have those two-hour early staff dismissal days, and if somebody has something going on that day, they choose to work the full hour day and not take that, um, that two hours on that Friday or whatever it is before the holiday. We wanted to make it a little more flexible so that the, the employee could take that, not just on that day, but sometime within that same applicable break slash pay period. And so that's what you see bolded there is that requested adjustment. Retirement compensation, um, the requested change on this would be to change it from, and any employee who intends to retire, listing the retirement or letting us know by January thirty-first of each year to changing that to be at least ninety days in advance of their retirement. So allowing for a little more flexibility, especially on the classified side where they don't have those full contracts that go through June thirtieth of each year. And then at the bottom there, we changed it to where, um, it would be at the sole discretion of the Board of Education. We did make that modification to where it would be the sole discretion of the superintendent with communication to the Board of Education. This next piece is the current, um, sick leave bank policy that classified staff has. Um, a- as of right now, the language that's in there, um, it's pretty rigid, and it makes it hard to be able to, for our staff to utilize days out of that bank when we really feel like it's a situation where they should qualify for that. So we modified the language over on the right to streamline it, so it's easier to understand, easier to read, um, and a little bit more flexible for classified staff trying to utilize days out of that bank. Still the same requirements. A doctor's no FMLA time. They have to use all of their, uh, they have to exhaust all of their sick leave before they can qualify, et cetera. And then this next piece is the workers' compensation policy, which we currently have. Um, just requesting the change, as we continue to navigate which facility or facilities meet the needs best of our employees as we have work comp issues come up, we decided to take out one specific location to where our employees can be seen when they have workers' comp issues. And so we just left it at if they, if they would like to be seen, then they need to notify HR so that an appointment can be made on their behalf. And then as policy has changed across the state, you'll notice that, that, that bolded eight hundred dollars there, um, which is how much the work comp will cover if they go to an unauthorized employer is changed from five hundred to eight hundred. And then that thirty days there, um, now that is changed as well with the state that they have thirty days to report the accident, um, versus ten to avoid a possible denial. That's all the changes on that one. Any questions? Okay. All right. We'll move through the rest. The substitute handbook. So this is one that Jason put together last year, and he's got the suggested, uh, changes here. Um, I believe that the major modification is down here in red, which would just be the addition of that tier-three, um, long-term sub classification that you all have previously approved to allow us to offer that two hundred and twenty-five dollars per day rate. And then that policy also adjusts, or I mean, addresses the, um, the holiday pay for those long-term subs, which is the other piece that's outlined there in red. So they'll now be, be, be given some holiday pay.
The other major change is those provisions right there have not been in the substitute handbook in the past. And so we are putting them in the back of the substitute handbook. So all of those people that fit that long-term sub category now have access to that right there as part of that substitute handbook.
Moving on, here's the para handbook. Really, the only changes we had in that would be the year twenty-five, twenty-six change. The CDC, the same thing, twenty-five, twenty-six change. DLT, some changes here. Looks like twenty-five, twenty-six change, um, and then also some language. Um, so now with the twenty-five, twenty-six year, the functional objectives will remain the same, but the structure of the meetings will change based on feedback from staff. So that was not, um, not in there before. The former DLT meetings will take place simultaneously with the monthly building administrator PLCs, and the principals will serve as the building DLT representative. And then on page five, um, on the right-hand side, there would be the new suggested language on membership, which will be building administrators, and then each BLT will provide information using the building's continuous feedback loop processes with the term of the academic year. The last one would be the leader mentor guidebook, and on that, the, the only requested change is just to modify the years from twenty-four to twenty-five to twenty-five to twenty-six. I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
And you'll bring this for us to vote on at the next board meeting?
Yep. Um, if there's no questions or issues, then yes, this will come back to you at the next board meeting in June for the second read and approval on the, um, consent agenda.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, um, this next one, um, I bring to you this evening is on, is, is an action item requesting your approval tonight. Um, and it's kind of multifaceted. So the first piece of it is to, um, adopt a newly proposed salary schedule, which I'll actually bring that up for you guys so that you can see what it will look like. And this information should look familiar to you as this is the same information that Phil Hayes brought to us when we had the, the work session from the Arnold Group. I'll just refresh it really quick. And so the first piece of this, um, consideration sheet is to approve the, um, adoption of this updated classified salary schedule for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. So you'll notice about this, kind of what Phil mentioned, that it, it starts at grade ten and goes down to fifteen, and then it goes from thirty to thirty-five, and then it starts again at forty and goes down to forty-two. So when we did the compensation study, we did a point factor analysis on every job description in the district once we redid them. Um, and so every job description in the position has been assigned a grade that ten through forty-two that you see on the left-hand side there. And so the corresponding grade then has its own salary range. So it has a minimum and it has max. And then, of course, along here, you see, so year zero would be like somebody's first year on year on the job. And then as they move through their experience and longevity with the district, they would move up to the next year for each grade, so on and so forth. Just for reference, because I thought it was kind of cool, here is the the current one for this year. So you'll notice that this one has many more steps going down, but only five going going across horizontally versus this other one has only 15 steps going down, but it has all of the vertical steps. So this will really allow us to, and then the red is where each one maxes out there on the end. This will really allow us to appropriately place each of our classified staff members based on the point factor analysis of their job description and their experience either directly only with the district internal years, but also taking into consideration any external years of experience they might have. So they'll be able to see exactly where they fall per hour on this. And then if they were, once they move to the next year, they'll be able to see what that new hourly rate is, barring any COLA adjustments or market adjustments or things like that. So that is the first piece of this. The second piece would be to implement the COLA adjustment for all classified employees. And so if you look on the consideration sheet where it discusses COLA, that would be an estimated total cost of $521,343.92, which is the same number that Phil brought to us when he discussed these numbers during the work session. And then the last piece of this would be to implement an adjustment to address the salary compression for classified staff up to that $6,000 per employee that Phil mentioned as well. So that cost, well, actually, that would impact 229 employees that are currently compressed. So it would address their compression up to $6,000 each. And so that estimated compression adjustment comes out to $587,253.32. So the total estimated budget impact with that $6,000 governor between the COLA and the compression comes out to 1.108, $1,108,597.25. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll move.
Second. We have a motion by Jared and a second by Tammy. Favor. Aye.
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you so much. That's incredibly exciting. You guys know that this has been a long time coming, and for that to be my my first action item was very exciting for me. So thank you for that. Yeah, thank you. Let's see, I don't think that I need this for anything else. I'm just gonna unplug it really quick. Okay, and then the next action item I bring to you tonight is a position reclassification request. So currently, right now, at Dodge City High School, they have the head secretary that's in the office during the summer. And then they have other nine-month staff that helps out on occasion, but is not there during the whole nine, the whole summer to make a 12-month position. And so working with staff, identifying needs, and continuing to ensure that they're as efficient and effective to get done the things that they need to get done in a full year, their request has been to reclassify the clerk position from a nine-month to a 12. So that is a cost to the district of $11,426, $11,426.50 for salary only to cover that additional three months.
And the person in that position is agreeable to move to the 12-month?
Yep.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jeff and a second by Jared, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero.
Awesome, thank you. The next one is also an reclassification request. So the next two that you have go hand in hand. This first one, which is the reclassification request of the current technology secretary to be now titled the Student Information Systems and Technology Specialist. So as we worked with the technology department through the compensation study, we asked each department to come up with their their master plan, so to speak, that would make their their department be as efficient and as effective as possible with the things that they see upcoming. And then one of the technologies requests was to add, add some positions or change some some things around to meet their current needs. And right now, they have an individual who's getting ready to retire at the end of this month. And so with that information, their request today is to reclassify the current technology secretary to now be called the Student Information Systems and Technology Specialist. So this person will assume some of the tasks that the the individual that's retiring, she will assume those those pieces, while some of her other job positions have been automated. So that is the, the entire reclassification would be an increased cost to the district of $2,912 annually.
And so you're not gonna rehire that other position then? Do I understand that correctly?
No.
Rather than re, yeah, basically rather than close a position and reopen a new one?
Yeah.
Just reclassifying that position to what they need.
Gotcha. I'll move.
Okay.
No second.
Motion by Ryan and a second by Jeff, all in favor.
Aye.
Five, zero.
Thank you. And my last one for the evening, which, like I said, was directly tied to the one you just approved. So the current, the the current individual that's getting ready to retire, her position right now is technically titled as Information Systems Two. And so as we have identified what the master org chart might look like for technology, they have identified the need for a network technician instead of that Information Systems Two position with some of the reclassified job duties and where where they need more assistance with staff. So their request today is to go ahead and reclassify her current position. And so that would actually be a cost decrease to the district of $3,934.60 annually.
You really get to vote for a decrease?
All right, you better.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Jeff, second by Jared, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero.
Thank you very much.
Nice job, Tara. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tara.
Dr. Dirksen?
All right, thank you. Just a quick item to present to the board tonight, but we do have the board policy updates from KASB. I wanted to get this all cleared up and ready for Jason when he starts in July, because all of these policies that are updated do take effect July 1. So there are 12 revisions and two new policies. Off the top of my head, one of the new policies had to do with military students, which probably won't impact our district a lot. And the other one, I can't think of right now, but I might see it as we go along. But the revisions, almost exclusively, the revisions are a result of the last legislative session, just changes that they've made to policies we currently have. And I'm not being editorializing when I say this, but I'm telling you, a few districts in northeast Kansas mess up, and Topeka makes a change, and every district in the state has to be impacted by that change. And that's a result of what we're dealing with here, and it's very frustrating. But to walk you through a couple of them, you can click on that link and look at them more thoroughly. There are some definite ones that I wanted to point out. One, one had to do with open records. There's a lot of requests nowadays for open records. And different districts are charging different ways for open records. So the legislature tried to standardize. And basically, in their standardization, they're not allowing incidental costs. They're only allowing actual expenses. They want you to make an effort, a reasonable effort, it is said, for cost mitigation so that you're not charging an outlandish price. We've always been very fair. Cary has a very orderly process and a very simplified explanation of how we're going to do it and asking what they're wanting. What is amusing that you should be aware of, we're getting requests from other states for records of our district. It's just, it's unbelievable what this has grown into. So anyway, that was one of the rules. Another one that we really need to pay attention to, because Jason was with me today, I called KASB to make sure I could talk with knowledge to you today, and they're not even sure of the revisions that they put in here. And they're waiting to get some clarification. That's how new this is, that's how difficult it is. It has to do with live streaming. And on live streaming, apparently there were some districts across the state that were cutting out the public comment and then turning the cameras back on after the public comment. And basically, the rule is if you're going to livestream, you have to livestream the whole meeting. That's fair. We've always done it that way. And so that is interesting in itself. Some interpretations of what that had been had been like when you do a YouTube, a YouTube filming or whatever, there's these bubble comments that come up, and some districts have been cutting those out. And as far as we know, you still have the right to do that, because that's not an actual part of the meeting. That's just editorial comment coming from viewers watching in. And, but they weren't positive about that. So that's still subject to change on that. But for now, in KASB, did encourage that we, if we don't include that, we don't include that. Our original interpretation had been, well, we just won't provide live streaming. We'll videotape and then archive it. But according to what we heard today, it only has to do with turning the tape off and turning the tape back on. And so I think we're okay with that.
Yeah, when I was at the KASB board meeting, yeah, I, we're not, you can correct me if I'm wrong, not required to.
No, that is a good point, Ryan.
But if we do.
That's right.
You have to play the entire.
There is no requirement that you livestream a meeting. And so some people just don't do that. We've always tried to make it accessible and feel like it's a benefit to the community, and we have nothing to hide. We're very transparent. And, and so we do it that way. But that's a great point. It is not a requirement. But if you do.
Yeah.
You have to provide the whole meeting, the whole meeting. So, okay. And then a couple others, one that I thought was interesting had to do with, oh, oh, the other new one is whistleblowers. I told you I'd come across that. Student activities. Previous year, they had put in a change in the policies about student activities, and it involved homeschool children. And if kids were getting in trouble at school, they were just going to their homeschool. They were, they were withdrawing, going to homeschool, and they were still eligible for student activities. But that wasn't the intent of the law, and the legislature didn't realize what they'd put together. So now they've cleared that up so that if a student is failing or a student is not in good standing because he got in too many fights, for instance, or something like that, then they're not eligible for those activities for the remainder of that semester, no matter whether they're homeschooled or they're at school. So that's a good one. But it cleared up a law that went into effect last year that was a bad one, because there were cases, some close by, where students were in bad standing at the school. So the home said, hey, he's now a homeschool student, and he, guess what? He's passing algebra. I don't know what your problem was. But he's, he's passing here at home. And so he's now eligible to be the star tailback for the football team. So, so we got that cleared up, and I'm glad for that. And then the other one that is causing a lot of angst and and need to make sure that we fully understand it, and this is the one that KASB's not sure where it all stands, but it has to do with coma and committee work. And we, as a board, have a lot of committees that we represent. However, if there are more than, I, I, it says it right here, and it's a KASB sheet, but if there's more than one on a committee, then you have to be subject to coma rules, which means you have to post the meeting, you have to keep minutes, and you have to keep a running record of that meeting. However, when a board president meets with a superintendent, that does not constitute a subcommittee. Member of one is not a subcommittee. So we haven't been doing anything wrong, Lisa. Don't feel bad about that. So, and, and similar, similarly, if a board member is on the rec commission or on a cooperative board, that does not constitute a subcommittee. So at this point, I think we're okay with that so far.
That's how I understood it. Yeah, because they're tech, those aren't our committees. I mean, we just have a representative.
That's right.
Sitting on those committees, but it's not a committee that has been called for by this board.
Great lead-in, because capital outlay is a, and we have two. And if we switched it to one, that doesn't change the fact that that is put together by the board. So we will have to figure out how we're going to, because I think it's always been helpful. I mean, it's frustrating to me. We, we put two on that committee to be transparent, to make sure that the community knows that the board is involved in what we're doing. When we put, you know, we spend a lot of dollars very quickly, just like we did tonight. Well, we've always been able to substantiate that with the board being on the committee and at the table and knowing what we're talking about. And now we've got to go through a lot of legwork to keep that up. And so we're gonna keep an eye on that, and we will follow the law, we'll do what's right. But it's disappointing that it seems like it's becoming more of a struggle to do what is right, and it just takes more effort. And, and so anyway, so really, there's not a whole lot new on this, other than all of the changes came about as a result of legislation. And that's frustrating. So I will be bringing this back at the next meeting in June 23rd, and we'll get approval for the board policies at that time. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. We're ready now for Board of Education member district responsibilities, parking wreck board.
I don't have anything.
Okay. Bright beginnings, head start, Tammy?
We're done for the summer until September.
Okay. And special ed, Jeff?
Well, the report I have is that we filled all positions except two, at the two middle schools here in town. And so that's exciting, just to go into the month of June with only two.
...
Oh. Oh, DCHS, yes. Comanche and, and the high school. We have all positions filled except those two, which is good.
Anything else?
No matter.
Legislative? We just. Yeah. Capital outlay, we already, both of those are gone anyway. We already kind of took care of that, nothing on calendar. We've got Jared, you will review district bills before the July board meeting. Upcoming dates, starting last, last week, June 2nd through the 13th is Summer Institute. June 23rd will be our second Board of Education meeting. It will be an evening meeting because there's no schools that want to have us in the middle of June. So that will be at 6 o'clock here in the boardroom. Are there any items for future board meetings or additional information? Okay, we need a couple executive sessions. The first one, did we decide 15 or 20? 15 minutes.
Non-elected personnel.
Non-elected personnel. We need Dr. Dirksen, Mr. Scheck, Clayton Kerbs?
Yes.
Okay, and the board, of course. Okay.
Then that will be followed by a 10-minute executive session for negotiations. And there'll be separate executive sessions. There will be no action taken after either. But you're free to stick around, and we will send somebody down to indicate the next one to start.
Okay, I make a motion for executive session for 15 minutes to discuss matters of non-elected personnel.
Okay. We've got a motion by Tammy and a second by Jared, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five, zero. Thank you, everybody. Dr. Dirksen?
Thank you.